This is Dr. Nathan Street and we are here with Carolina conservatives. We are preachers with a punch and we are thrilled today to be talking to some of the candidates for Guilford County Schools at Board of Education as well as Dr. Fred Daniel. And I'm here with me is the one, the only, my co-host.
Pastor Alan Mashburn, thank you for joining us. We've been looking forward to this and we hopefully we can have a great dialogue today and people can see the real values and the real issues at hand.
So today at this, now we've had to split these folks apart because we want to give everybody as much time as possible to talk, you know, and you know, we know that school board members love to hear themselves talk. So y'all just gonna need to get used to it. So yeah. So we are today, we are thrilled to have with us, first of all, Dr. Fred Daniel, you have, you've seen him many times. He's pastor of Brookhaven Baptist Church. We're thrilled to have him with us because here with Preachers with a Punch, we certainly want to ensure that we do everything, we color everything with the Word of God. And that's exactly why Dr. Daniel's going to be with us today. So we can just kind of couch everything in the Word of God. But also with us is the one, the only, the myth, the woman, the myth, the legend. She is a fighter like I've never seen before. She is Stephanie Mitchell, who is the head of Take Back Our Schools Guilford County or GCS. We are thrilled to have her with us. And then also with us running for school board and I think it's District Two, right Chrissy? Yep, District Two running and District Two is Chrissy Pratt. She's in Dr. Daniel's hood. So Chrissy Pratt will be joining us here as well. So we are thrilled to have you all with us today. And Pastor Mashburn, I'm gonna, let's start out with with some questions for for these folks.
All right, Chrissy, let's start with you. I've noticed some of your posts and I agree with just about everything you post. I can't think of anything that I disagree with. You seem to be a valiant for truth. You seem to be someone who cares for not only children, but the process of education. Give us your opinion of where we are right now, specifically in your district, in your county.
No, right now we are not in a good place here in Guilford County. I mean, I can't sugarcoat it. Our students are not performing well academically at all. They were not performing well before COVID and COVID has really exacerbated the situation drastically. We had fewer than 40% of our kids scoring proficient on the reading exams this past year, the end of year tests and the math tests for the end of the year, the Math One test. We only had 8% of students here in Guilford County who scored proficient on that test. There are eight.
Did you say 8%?
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. 8%, which is not acceptable at all. You know, we have many initiatives happening here in Guilford County, a lot of different things happening in the school system, and I can't help but look at those test scores and say what we are doing is not working.
The state of North Carolina spends what 52% of our budget. If this was a business, I would shut it down.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I think there are, there are multiple factors that are driving this poor performance, but one of the most significant ones, and I know Stephanie and I have had many conversations about this, is the state of the discipline policy here in Guilford County. The teachers have had their hands tied when it comes to being able to administer constant misbehavior. The, many of the administrators, not all of them, but many of them will not dole out punishments to students. There are, students are not getting suspended for fighting. The classrooms are literally out of control. Students are afraid for their safety. Teachers are afraid for their safety. Teachers feel disrespected and they're leaving in droves because of this. They, you know, there are, there are so many different things happening in the county, but when it comes down to it, teachers want to teach. That's what they're good at. That's what they're passionate at and they're not being able to. And most of the kids want to learn and they're being held back by the actions of a few who are causing these major, major disruptions. So.
Okay, you said the teachers' hands are tied. Who's tying them?
They're being tied by the administrators in the school as well as the administration downtown, the central offices of Guilford County. There are, you know, I mean, there are unfortunately unofficial edicts coming from downtown that say, do not suspend kids. And I'm hearing it constantly. You know, part of this campaign process, what the team that I'm working with and I have done is spend the past six, eight months talking with people from all over the county, really getting to know the issues from the inside, teachers, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, administrators. And we're hearing this from everyone. You know, it's, it's this unspoken, you will not do anything because it makes our numbers look bad if we suspend students and we're doing a disservice to them.
So Stephanie, this leads really to, this is a great segue, what Chrissy's talking about with all of these issues that are happening. This is the reason why you started Take Back Our Schools GCS because tell us about that process of what you saw and what you encountered and why that led you to where you are today.
So I had volunteered in an elementary school with my best friend, her first grade class, helping her, thinking that my older kids, because they were in high school, it's time for them to stand on their own. I shouldn't have to be there every day and, you know, you know, overseeing everything they're doing. High school is a time to experience things, make mistakes so that while they're still under my roof and I can help them. I was, first day of school, I was taking my daughter, who was a senior, and my daughter, who was a freshman to school, and there was a fight going on in the parking lot. And it was early in the morning, so it was still sort of dark, but no one was stopping it. No one was doing anything. I was getting honked at to keep moving along and I just did me and I drove my truck down the embankment, honking my horn, flashing my light, this male to let go of this female. And, you know, finally the SRO came up and did what he needed to do. He was dealing with another issue down by the soccer, down by the soccer tennis courts and appreciated me doing what I did. You know, he took over. I took the girls up to go to school and my, my daughter, the older one, looks in the backseat and says to my younger one, keep your eyes on the ground. Do not talk to anyone. Just mind your own business and they'll leave you alone. And I was like, what did you say? What, what are you talking about? And she's like, Mom, you just don't get it. You just brought attention to all of us now and now we've got to go into school. Well, my window's down and there's a football sized looking guy there and he's like, oh dad, was that your mom that was honking a horn and drove her truck? And I just turned around and I'm like, get your ass to class. I parked the car, went in and I didn't leave. I stayed. I, there happened to be a school board meeting that night. I went to that school board meeting. I just, I had something to read and of course I didn't read it and come to find out, our cameras don't work at the school. And they didn't know what was going on. And this wasn't necessarily our principal's issue. He had been advocating and asking to have things fixed and it was upper level administration that wasn't doing their job.
So wait a minute, the cameras don't work, right? Did I hear that right?
We're talking about security cameras.
Security cameras. So by the way, by the way, it costs about $100,000 to install security cameras in schools. Been there, done that. I know what that's like. And so you saw, you saw that all this stuff is happening and there's no way, no way to document that.
Nope. No. And they, they want it that way. They buy the car, but they do not pay for the tires or put the engine in it. So they buy it to be able to say, hey, we have cameras, but if you don't have people maintaining those cameras, putting them in chronological order, you know, so when the SRO pulls it up and can see simultaneously a student walking through the halls, if you don't have it working correctly, it's all for nothing. So we're wasting more money. We've bought the car, but we haven't implemented anything else. So it doesn't help anything, you know?
We have the camera and it's not even hooked to the recording equipment. So it might be turned on and running, but there's no tape to go back and look at. Very, very common.
Yeah. So, so Dr. Daniel, we are seeing what, what these ladies are describing essentially is, is it to be expected? Because, you know, I fully believe that, and we, we teach and preach that we're living in the last days and that, you know, the, the love of many will grow cold. And so people will be fighting, people will have issues with each other. What's the, what is the biblical perspective on this?
Well, I think there's a lot of things, but God's not the author of confusion and he has set things in order. We talked about this on another podcast. God gave us the family. God gave us the place of worship and God gave us the government, which includes the schools, and it's our duty to manage those and government officials have shut us out.
Yeah, literally shut us out of the buildings, literally.
And we saw that in COVID especially. They, they let everybody else in, but they wouldn't let parents in. I mean, that's kind of, that's strange.
We've got to take, take it back. And one of the reasons that I have been very interested in what Stephanie's doing is the program she's laid together to affect our school board in a positive fashion with good principles of order and discipline and education. I'm really disappointed at the education our kids are not getting. And Stephanie, you want to tell us a little bit about the plan?
So what happened was is I've spent many years trying to find who this magic person was that would hold our school board and superintendent accountable. And what I learned is, is there's no governing body over our school board. Obviously, the, the school board is the one who was supposed to hire and fire the superintendent, but because of Contreras getting the emergency power back in March of 2020, and we still have not gotten that back, she can do whatever she wants, whenever she wants. So also learning that our legislation is outdated and that is why there is no one that can come in and help us when our school boards become complicit with the superintendent and the agenda, what's being pushed out, not what's in the best interest of the students and staff. The only thing we could do is flip the school board. That's it. It takes five votes. And, you know, Catherine Truitt had made it very clear to me for several years, the only way we can fix this is by flipping the school board and giving the parents and the taxpayers, the people a voice. So that's, we started off going and speaking to wherever we could, whoever we could, putting out, you know, ads, asking for anyone interested in running for school board to come to our take back meetings. And it became a decision of we, the people. We decided we didn't want a primary. We wanted to come together as a team, everybody who's running for two, four, six, eight, they figure out who's the strongest person, who knows the most, who's willing to put in the work and that's who we're going to endorse. So that was our vision. And we did it on our own. We did not have help from GOP, from anyone like that, because I couldn't get help. There were some key people like Mr. Fred and, and Mr. Haywood that, that did step up and were trying to help push, you know, our agenda through so we could be heard by more people. And then the North Carolina GOP came out and all of a sudden said, yes, we want people to run for school board and we need, we need to help them. And I, I didn't want their help then. I don't want it associated with any party. I want this to be about the people, the parents, the grandparents, the taxpayers. And so that's how we've been moving forward is finding people who are willing to stand up for our kids, run as a slate, be as, be a team. And Chrissy can explain more about the values, what they decided to run, put their platform on.
So before you jump into that, Chrissy, because that's what I want to lead into is you all have set up something very unique here. I saw that Durham County Schools is actually emulating exactly what you all are doing and running a slate. And there are, there's another school district as well, doing the same thing. So we've seen a seismic shift happen in our politics in this nation, particularly around what's happening in schools. So what can you and the principles that you all, the values that you all have in this new vision, new direction, slate of candidates, what are y'all planning to do to really harness that shift and that, that everyone is really looking to do that has changed Virginia from top to bottom? And we saw that in real time. What are y'all planning to do to try to make that shift and change Guilford County Schools, North Carolina?
Well, you know, we have, we have a massive road ahead of us with dealing with this. There are more issues happening in Guilford County Schools than we could begin to touch on in this podcast. But in, in general, we're looking at a couple of main categories that we really want to focus on. One of them, Stephanie touched on a little bit, empowering parents. There is great frustration in the county, just from little things like I emailed my school board member and I never heard back. You know, to, to the extremes also of not being able to get into the schools and see what's happening in the schools and not being able to go in and volunteer, not being able to get copies of the curriculum and find out what their students are actually being taught in the classroom. The parents want to have a voice and the people that we've put together on this slate of candidates are absolutely committed to listening to the community. We can't fix every single issue and we may not agree with everything that is brought to us, but we absolutely will listen and give the parents that voice to be heard to try to make some of these changes. In a similar line, and I sort of touched on this before, we really want to focus on supporting the teachers and the staff of this county. I took a look based on the notes that are in the, the Board of Education meetings, you can see the personnel report goes out in every single board meeting. And I went back through this for the past three years to see what does this exodus of employees look like? We have about 9,000 employees in GCS and over the past year, we have lost 3,000 employees. So a third of our staff over, now that's not accounting for new people coming in and all of that, but that's a massive number of people who have chosen to leave, you know, the teaching profession. A lot of them are teachers. I don't have the exact breakdown by role, but certainly the majority were. And bus drivers and support staff and cafeteria staff. And it all goes back to that feeling of not being supported. And it's not just, you know, we want teacher appreciation day or we want bus driver appreciation. They want to have the backup from the administration when they say, I have a problem. They want somebody to do something about it. I spoke to a bus driver about two weeks ago, picking up his kids at a high school in the afternoon. There's a fight on his bus before he leaves school grounds. He calls administration over. Administration says, we'll deal with this tomorrow. Drive the two girls home. So he now has to take home these two girls who were just physically fighting to the point that they have marks on them. And of course, the next day, kids aren't suspended off the bus. They're not suspended from school. No consequences. That's the kind of support that our teachers and staff need. They need to know, when I have a problem, somebody's going to be there to help me and back me up.
Are there any numbers of students that parents have taken out of the system? You gave us the numbers on the teachers that have left.
Yes, we, at last count, this would have been last August, we had over 5,000 students that had withdrawn during COVID. We believe that number is actually higher because we have heard from many, many GCS staff that alluded to miscounting going on in the beginning of the year, that some of the kids, they could not account for, couldn't reach parents, and they were just told to mark them as absent because of COVID. So we tried doing a FOIA on that to find out what the numbers were and it's not been felt. So we have a very strong feeling that it's actually much higher than that. And that also goes back to, you know, why we are no for now on this bond. We don't even know how many kids we have. We don't know how many staff we have. We don't even know how many buildings we need. You know, public education is imploding right before our eyes.
But Stephanie, but Stephanie, let me, let me play the devil's advocate with, with you now. And Chrissy, Dr. Daniel, y'all just chime in as well, but.
We will have the devil in here.
We won't have, we, let's, let's advocate the devil out. So here's the, here's the issue. The schools are falling apart. We have all these issues. Chrissy just talked about all those issues. So why wouldn't we want this $1.7 billion bond? Don't you want the schools to be supported? And don't you want the schools to be rebuilt and maintained in the right way? What's wrong with you guys for not, for not supporting that?
Well, that is such a great question because we keep hearing that. Go ahead, Stephanie.
I'm just gonna say, we weren't supportive of the $300 million bond. And two years later, and we have nothing to show for it, except for two drawings of Taj Mahals that are the biggest safety risks ever. You know, these open concept buildings that everyone that has anything to do with security is saying, you do, you do not want glass, you know, floor to ceiling buildings. You do not want open concept buildings because no longer than will we have to worry about, you know, predators getting into the school. They can sit from the parking lot and take out an entire class. Also, if we can't maintain the buildings that we have, how are we going to maintain these elaborate buildings? So what we have also learned, and you can go to our Take Back website and see the no for now, we're documenting it. It's not our opinion. You can click on it and see for yourself, you know, the $300 million bond is not even going to be spent for another two to four years. And so now we want to put on this $1.7 billion bond that's going to sit in the county commissioners' reserve fund bank account. That makes no sense. Yes, our buildings are falling apart and there should be criminal charges pressed against the county commissioners and the Board of Education and superintending for allowing it to happen. We finally got FOIAs back from the state lottery commission showing the last four to five years, they have not used the money that is supposed to be used for capital needs. Instead, they have turned it straight over to the county commissioners. Why? Why are, why are we helping the county commissioners to get a AAA credit rating and we've literally allowed our buildings to fall apart? And Nathan, we've heard it from maintenance department people that have quit, that there's 33 open positions in maintenance and they have been told they're not allowed to fix anything. They're just allowed to patch it. They want these to look bad for a reason.
So by the way, FOIA stands for Freedom of Information Act. Just want the listeners to know that, that, that you have a right to go to your government entities and request public information. So, so Chrissy, go ahead.
Yeah. So this ties in wonderfully to one of the other parts of the platform of the new vision, new direction candidates, which is promoting financial accountability. You know, I absolutely agree. Our schools are not in good condition. They are falling apart, literally some of them. However, I've, I've also had teachers say to me, I, and this might not be a popular opinion, but I'm going to say it anyway. They've said to me, I would rather be in a school building that has physical issues and be able to be supported and teach than be in a super fancy, brand new building. So that's sort of a side note to that, that I thought was really interesting.
Powerful.
It is. I thought, I thought it was. You know, because that's what the teachers want to do. They want to be able to educate these kids. But, you know, we've seen a lot of examples of financial misspending. You can see again in the minutes of every single board meeting, the consent agenda at the beginning of the meeting.
A clean audit every year for 20 years, Chrissy, what are you talking about?
They have. And you know what that audit proves? That audit proves that one plus one is two and that two plus two is four. And that the numbers in the budget add up. But I tell you, I've spent a lot of time digging through, through the budget books and I believe the document's about 154 pages long, looking for one thing or another. Most recently, I was trying to figure out how much money we've spent on the, how, here comes the bus app, because that's a personal pet peeve of mine. That's affecting my household. And I was trying to see how much money is being spent and you can't find detailed information, which is why there have been multiple calls for a forensic audit. You know, yes, we've got these clean audits that say money in, money out adds up, but we're not seeing the, you know, transfer of funds from the maintenance department to somewhere else instead of doing the maintenance. We're not seeing the juggling of money. We're not seeing where, you know, contracted services. What's that mean? That could mean anything in the world. And we, we want accountability. You know, the school has a huge, huge budget. It's taxpayer money, a lot of it. And we want to see where it's going. And right now, looking at the performance of our students, it doesn't seem to me like it's going to the right place. So we're not educating our kids.
So you're, you're right. So we are, and by the way, let's just point out too, there's these things called journal entries that y'all need to be aware of, that journal entries are side documentations of, of financial, financial dealings that, that are generally done outside of the budget. So make sure that when you're doing that forensic audit, that you go looking for journal entries as well. And so Chrissy, Dr. Daniel, Chrissy was talking about that we, that the teachers want to teach. They want to teach. And, you know, so why are we then spending with all the, our, our efforts that are, seem to be failing with education? Why are we spending time focusing on social emotional learning, diversity, equity, inclusion, critical race theory, LGBT and gender studies in kindergarten through third grade? Why are we spending all of our time on that?
That's a good question. And just as mentioned earlier, as we started, reading abilities, math ability, the education is not there. It's just not there. And I'd like to ask Chrissy, because I know the answer, but so November comes and you're elected, what, what are you bringing to the board that somebody else is not bringing? I mean, I've looked at this group, I've looked at this group that Stephanie has put together, y'all put together yourselves, and I see individual characteristics that are just predominant in each person. What do you bring into plate to address the education?
So professionally, I have been an educator almost my entire life. Former classroom teacher, I've been in the online education world for the past 12 years or so in management roles. And so not only do I have the, the in-depth understanding of curriculum and what should be taught and what should be happening in a school, but I've also worked in schools that were failing in the state of Maryland, that were in the position of, we're about to be taken over by the state if we don't improve, and led the school improvement committee to put together the plans of how are we going to take that school from failing to being successful? And we achieved that. And I've also worked in, as a manager of instructional design and director of curriculum, developing project plans, creating budgets, doing hiring, doing firing, trying to figure out how can we produce the best possible product in the shortest amount of time or the time that we're allotted with the number of people that we have and with the budget that we have, which I think all directly ties into the role of a school board. And then from the personal side, you know, I'm just, I'm a huge fan of education. I am very passionate about our students and about giving them the skills that they need to be successful. And I just, I feel like we're not doing that right now. We are, our, our kids are hurting. They've been through a lot in the past two years with COVID. They've had social isolation. They don't know how to function in a classroom anymore. And they need, you know, that support. And I'm someone who is very compassionate. I've been there in the classroom. I've got kids who are going through Guilford County Schools and have seen what's happening up close and personal. And, and I'm ready to fight for the kids and for the teachers and the staff of Guilford County Schools.
Chrissy, I believe you. I think you're, I think you're real. But I want to know your, I want to know your stance on critical race theory.
Absolutely. So critical race theory is hot, hot topic and it's been twisted very much by the media. And so different people have different opinions of what it means. So I'll sort of tell you where I stand. I absolutely believe we should be teaching our kids accurate history of our country without a doubt. I think we should be teaching black history, white history, you know, Native American history and some of our history as a country. And some of our history as a country is ugly. It is really ugly and I don't think we should hide that at all. So I'm a big fan of teaching reality. However, I am against teaching that kids should be classified into oppressed or oppressor based upon the color of their skin. And I am absolutely against saying to a child, well, because you're black, you never have a chance to succeed. And you're not going to be able to get anywhere in life because you are inherently oppressed because of your skin color. I absolutely do not believe that. We are all made in God's image. Every one of our kids has a chance to be successful, no matter what their background is from. You know, I could tell you things about my background that you probably wouldn't believe looking at me. We all have our different hurdles that we've had to go over in life. And I think that we really need to be teaching our kids that they all can succeed no matter what. So this oppressed versus oppressor, I feel like it's creating greater division. They say it's not happening in Guilford County schools. It absolutely is. I've seen different things from different classes, my own son's class included, that have showed me proof that yes, this division is happening in the county and that needs to stop. We need to come together here in Guilford County and in this country as a whole. This country as a whole is in big trouble. We need to stop the division and work together for each other.
Where do you stand on the George book and filth in public schools?
Oh my goodness. So in general, I am against banning of books in general because I believe that literature, much, much like history, can sometimes be uncomfortable and have difficult topics. I believe that we should have grade appropriate materials in our schools. I think we need to be looking, is this elementary, middle, high school when we're considering books? And I also think that they need to be high interest books that the kids are going to read. However, I do think that there are some things in our schools that probably shouldn't be there. And so what I would want to do would be to establish an advisory board that includes parents, teachers and librarians. So you've got the parents want, you know, being able to express what they want for their kids. You've got the teachers from the educational standpoint. And you've got librarians who are experts in literature and what's appropriate for kids. And then I think that committee needs to be given the power to make some decisions. And there are a lot of different directions that they could go. They could go with outright pulling things from book, from schools. They could go with creating rating systems. They could go with, you know, keeping books behind the librarian's desk and the parent has to authorize if they want their child to read that material. I think there are a lot of, of, you know, just different options out there. And I wouldn't want to say what the best one is because I think a group of people together should make a decision like that.
And giving parents choice, giving them choice, you know? So, so Stephanie, I gotta, you know, what Chrissy's been talking about with this division. It is real. Do you think that the division that is, that is being perpetrated and being foisted on our, on our schools and on our children? This division of gender, this division of race? Do you think, and we've seen an uptick of school violence. Let's not throw, throw that under the rug. We've seen what you've been talking about with the fights and that sort of stuff. It go, it's been going up, it's not going down. Do you think that we are causing this through this division attack that we are, that we are forcing on our schools?
So, so the one thing that I can say that I learned from a group that I had started along with another gal, Joanne Gilbert at Western Guilford High School under Cash Chabera was called Leaders. And we were there every morning greeting kids as they came in, greeting them as they left, would be there to help with teachers, whatever was needed, just to be a positive reinforcement for kids. Because our thinking was if they had somebody smiling at them, maybe they would be more apt to smile back. And it did happen over time. But one thing that I learned was Guilford County buses, kids from all over. Some of these kids are on buses for 45 minutes to an hour. By the time they get to this school, they get, they're mad. Some of, sometimes they're hungry. Sometimes they're just angry because this is not their school. Their school was right across the street from their house. We're bussing them to a different school. They can't play sports, so they're mad.
Why are we doing that?
Because we had to make our schools more colorful. Don't you know, Nathan, kids can't learn unless it's more colorful. Right? So these kids are getting off the buses mad, just angry. Well, what happens then? They're going into a class and they're getting garbage that you can't do anything because of the color of your, of your skin. And it's because of the white kids sitting beside you is why you can't do anything. So they're constantly angry, they're constantly mad. Kids are not being suspended, but rather moved to different high schools. So now we've got gang affiliations going on all throughout our high schools. So there's an easy way to now, all of a sudden I can go be a part of this gang and I can take out that frustration and beat somebody up. Or, you know, the, the other thing that we started realizing was these, these kids should be involved in sports. They have got anger issues. They need to learn how to be a part of a team. They, in order to be a part of society, you have to learn to get along with others and control your anger. Sports banned, you know, all of that teaches these kids this, you know, being a part of a chorus. It all teaches you how to be a part of a team. Then eliminated. So, you know, something that I had seen happening before COVID at Western was for every football player that was out there, there was a coach assigned to that kid. And at first I was like, what's going on? Well, these were all kids that didn't live there, couldn't play in sports if they didn't have a coach to pick them up and take them. Their parents are not involved with schools because they're too far away. And when COVID hit, it just sort of dawned on me. This is about division. This is about breaking up the family. And what's the fastest way to do that is to make these kids mad, move them away from where they feel safe and secure. And then they're from their neighborhood schools and drop them across town. It, it's all about division, creating anger. Everything that they keep saying as to why they're doing these, you know, diversity and equity and inclusion garbage, in my opinion, everything that they're trying to say on why they're doing it to help those that need it the most. All they're doing is lighting that fire under them to the point that these kids crack and lose it. And that's why the violence is so bad, Nathan. These are not bad kids. Bad kids, but they don't have, they don't have a gentle hand reaching out to help them and listen to them.
And what they're doing is not working. There is no angle that you can look at the school system and say, okay, well, maybe this piece of this is being successful. You know, our classrooms are out of control. The students are angry, like Stephanie's saying. The teachers are afraid for the safety in their classroom. The kids aren't performing academically. How is any of this helping our kids? Where is, is the data that says, okay, this, what we're doing right now is working? It's not there because it's not working.
Or it's manufactured.
Right. Something else too, Linda Welborn had brought this up at several school board meetings. She wanted to see, like Chrissy was saying, she wanted to see the data showing that this is working. And they constantly say, oh, we'll get it back to you. Something else that we had noticed was, you know, the AP classes you've got to test into. There's no point in putting a child in a class that is too advanced for them, right? That's just more failure. Well, what we have seen happening in Guilford County schools with Contreras is students are being plugged into different programs that the kids don't want to be in. And they have come out and flat said, I don't want to be in here. I didn't for this class. It's ruining the kid's self-esteem because they don't understand what's being taught. Heck, half of them are, were struggling beforehand and now you throw them into an AP class. So then that's disrupting all the kids, the kids who want to learn, the teacher who's wanting to teach. And then you've got a kid angry who doesn't want to be in there. It is almost like the devil has stepped in and has said, no one is going to be happy. No one is going to excel. We're going to just blow it all up. And that's exactly what they're doing. They're deterring those kids that work so hard and get the good grades. They get no recognition for it. And then you've got kids who never show up, don't do the work. And we're giving them, you know, little $25 cash cards and free food. So it's a constant division. It's constantly about making two groups angry at each other, if that makes sense.
That continues over into administrative areas as well. I have a, a sister-in-law who has been in the system for a long time. She made her way into the curriculum department and she was constantly poo-pooed in meetings because she was white and she was part of the problem. And she was causing the lack of diversity. And she just finally had her fill of it and probably one of the best people they had walked away. Now there's free rein.
Yes.
To get rid of their good people in administrative positions.
We've also heard that, Nathan, just real quick. We've also heard exactly what he was talking about. We at Take Back have become that voice for anyone. We don't need to know who you are. We don't ask questions. If you want something, you know, us to look into something or to, to post something, we'll put it up there. One thing that we heard, have heard so much from our staff, not just teachers, but custodians, to, to teachers, to administrators, to even SSOs and maintenance guys. They're forced to go through this trainings, these trainings. And what they do is they divide them up by color. Well, those that are in the middle, biracial have, have nowhere to go. And so they're like, oh, well, you want, you want to go with, um, the black group is over here. Well, no. Go with either group. So again, it's further pushing more division all the way through the system.
So we have about two minutes remaining. And in our, in our final two minutes, I want to go around the horn just about 30 seconds, starting with Dr. Daniel, then Stephanie, and then I want to end up with Chrissy. So, Dr. Daniel, Stephanie, Chrissy, why should our listeners who are generally ultra-conservative, who are Christian, who attend church regularly? Why should they consider voting for the New Vision, New Direction candidates, including Chrissy?
Well, from my seat, I'm very well pleased with the diversity of abilities and the uniqueness of abilities that each of these four candidates has. And I keep telling, I, I'm going to vote for Chrissy. But I, I, I keep telling Tim Andrews, I wish I was in his district. I want to vote for him. I want to vote for the whole crew because they're bringing to the table what real education used to be. And that's what I'm looking forward to getting back.
Great. Stephanie?
New Vision, New Direction are candidates who are a team. They work together, they're supporting each other, they each have a superpower. And we need all those superpowers together in order to fix the problems. We're not giving up on these kids. They believe that public education can be fixed and they need to be given the opportunity to do so.
That's well spoken. Chrissy?
I think again, you know, the team standpoint, we've got Linda Welborn, current board member who is constantly pushing against the rest of the board, trying to do the best thing for the students despite everything happening. We've got Robert Milliken, who owns his own construction company. He's got the understanding of the business side, the understanding of facilities and what goes into those. We've got Tim, who's a project manager, former Marine, fabulous background. And you've got me with the education background. And I truly think we need an educator on the Board of Education. We don't have one currently. I don't think everybody should be an educator, but I think that perspective is really important. And we've been working together for months. We are all people who are committed to the kids and committed to the county and passionate about bringing change. So I hope your, your viewers will listen to us and hopefully get out and vote for us.
Excellent. What do you think about, what we'll think of this pastor?
Well, I hope that everyone in the, all of our viewers, especially in these districts of this county would get out and vote for these people. We need them on the board. We need change to happen. We need people fired. And we need, we need people out of roles. Clean this mess up when you get up there. And we're going to pray for you. We're going to stand behind you and we'll be a voice for you if we need to. But get in there and fire their butts.
And we want you to come back. When you get on the board, we want you to come back on the show with us so that we can keep, you know, I think it's important that the community always holds our politicians and our elected officials to account. And we want you to come back on so that we can hold you to account. I'm sure you want that too. And so we are happy to, happy to, to have had Dr. Daniel, Stephanie Mitchell here and Chrissy Pratt with us. We wish you the very best. We are praying for you and that Carolina Conservatives Preachers with a Punch here. We are here to help punch back with you. We want to see these leftist liberals and these, these insane imbeciles.
Yeah, fire them and let them get an honest job.
Go out, go out and do something else because y'all, you're doing is just messing up our school districts. And our listeners who are in Randolph County, Moore County, Montgomery County, Davidson County, you think that, oh, this is Guilford County, we don't even pay attention to this. It's everywhere. And if we can make this kind of change in Guilford County, it will spread throughout our state and throughout our nation. And so that's what we are looking for, a revival to hit our schools through these, these school board members that we are going to see elected in November.
Yeah, Stephanie Mitchell, I've never met you, but you're a fireball. I appreciate you. I follow you.
We need to, we need to fix it. That's our hashtag, fix it.
Hashtag fix it.
Let me offer you another one. Fire them and fix it.
Fire and fix. Thank y'all for coming on with us and thank you, thank you, our listeners for joining and listening to Carolina Conservatives Preachers with a Punch this week. I'm Dr. Nathan Street.
I'm Pastor Alan Mashburn. Thank you for joining.
God bless.